Good evening. I call our meeting to order at seven o'clock. This is the portion of the meeting where we're talking about the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget review. I ask will you please all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board of Selectmen. What I what I have done in the past is normally I read the letter that's on the summary. Instead of tying up your whole meeting, instead of going through the whole summary, if it's okay with the board, I'll go right to the PowerPoint presentation because that's going to cover what's in the summary. So instead of doing it twice, I think if you guys are okay, that's what I'll do.
Sure, please.
Okay. Thank you. Bear with me. So the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, Town of Hebron, 15 Gilliard Street, Hebron, Connecticut, dear members of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Person at the section 902C of the Town Charter are presenting the Town Manager's proposed budget for the fiscal years 2023 to 2024 totaling forty one million dollars, one hundred and fifty three thousand, four hundred and nineteen. The expenditure budget as presented is a eleven point zero two percent increase or a four million eighty five thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollar more than the fiscal year from 2022, 2023's budget. The Town Manager, along with my trusted staff, reduced the department head budget requests in the town government budget by three hundred and ninety nine thousand, one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Summary attached. The Town Manager's budget includes initiatives focusing on public safety and a continued commitment to adjust salaries to equitable levels. The Town Manager is recommending a CIP budget of nine hundred and forty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars, reflecting a general government contribution to CIP of eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars with additional funding sources. This proposal supports the town's needs and a commitment to maintaining infrastructure and equip. The American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds have made it possible to fund many important projects outside of the CIP budget, which probably would have not got funded. The Town Manager is recommending the following funding allocations. So under capital projects, the category with ten thousand to seventy five thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty seven. Future revalue, excuse me, revaluation, forty thousand dollars. And this year, because it's such a tough year, the contribution once again, flat funding the same as last year to open space, I'm recommending one hundred and twenty five thousand. The Hebron Board, the Hebron Board of Education budget as presented is a fourteen point five seven percent increase of one million, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars for a total budget of thirteen million, nine hundred and eighty five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. The Ram Board of Education has presented a thirty one million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty eight dollars or a four point seven six percent increase, which includes a five hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and forty five dollar CIP budget. Due to the population shift in Hebron students attending Ram, this translates to an increase of one million, three hundred and ninety three thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars to Hebron for a total levy amount of fifteen million, six hundred and seventy four thousand, seven hundred and sixty three dollars. This does reflect a higher increase compared to last year as there was a credit taken against last year's levy. We acknowledge that the education budgets as presented today would mean a huge tax increase and the numbers will need to come down to present a budget to taxpayers that will be supported. We hope all the boards will work collaboratively to make that happen. The October twenty second grand list has increased by sixteen million, one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty one dollars or a one point seven five percent increase. With the budget as presented, this translates to a mill rate of thirty six point three eight for real estate and personal property and a motor vehicle mill rate of thirty two point four six. As you review the budget, please keep in mind as a fluid document and numbers will change over the next couple of months. The proposed budget is based on information available today with placeholders for unknown or estimated amounts. Please refer to the attached executive summary, which will outline the major expenditures and revenue changes and other highlights to the Town Manager's proposed budget. I'd like to thank the Town Department Heads for the cooperation in preparing the department budget, so along with my staff, Donna, Elaine, and Dory, for all their hard work every year. Gets harder and harder with all these new mathematical spending caps that we have to meet motor vehicle caps. So it's always a learning experience. So thank you. The email address is listed at hebronbudget@hebronct.com. Has been set up to receive public comment and input. Emails received will be forwarded to the Boards of Selectmen, Finance and Education. It's important for public participation early in the budget process. Public participation at all meetings is encouraged. All March budget meetings will be held virtually. Budget information and key dates are available on the Hebron's website. HTTP slash slash hebronct.com, budget slash information. We are working to prepare a budget which reflects the town's needs and maintains a high level of town provided services and educational excellence. The budget referendum vote is Tuesday, May second, two thousand and twenty three. That's held at six AM to eight PM at the Hebron Elementary School. The Town Manager is recommending at this time, an exit poll be conducted at the May second referendum. Thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal. We look forward to another challenging but successful budget season. Sincerely, Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager. Okay, Mr. Chairman. I do have the PowerPoint. You want me to go through that and have a question and answer session at the end of it, or you want to?
Yeah, let's, well, you're going only going to be going over the first, what, half a dozen pages?
In the PowerPoint, I go through the whole summary?
Yes.
I wasn't even going to get into the summary unless you want me to because it's repetitive.
No, no, no. I was going to say, let's go through the PowerPoint. And then at the summary and then people can ask questions, comment, or what have you, if that sounds okay with everybody. I mean, it just makes sense. So please continue.
Okay, thank you. All right. So there's no explanation for the first page, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, presentation, March second. So the proposed budget as it stands today is forty one million, one hundred and fifty three thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. That's a spending increase of four million, eighty five thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars or eleven point oh two percent over the current year's budget. So listed are the general government, the Hebron Board of Education, and the Ram Board of Education. The next slide is proposed expenditures, increases and decreases. You'll see the town, town budget total, you know, town government on the top there is a six point four four percent. That's with some public safety stuff in there, a new SRO, some shifts over at the Fire and Police Department. There's contribution to capital improvements, which is a little bit higher this year than last year. As we discussed earlier, the constant contribution to open space at one hundred and twenty five thousand. The contribution to capital projects, which is up a little bit more than it was last year. And then, of course, the contribution to revaluation, that makes that up. Then on the bottom, you'll see the Hebron Board of Education, the Ram assessment without the debt, then the Ram debt for a total government budget, the forty one, one, five, three, four, nineteen. So if you look at the Ram asset without debt, it looks like a twelve percent, but that's because of the the shift in the levy and then also the credit we got last year to offset that. That's why it looks like it's such a big increase this year. Next up is the Town Government Budget Drivers, Initiatives. So the public safety, as I stated before, you know, the fire department's got some pay adjustments for some of their staffing to keep in line with regular local fire department, fire departments around us. The new thing is mandated to police department accreditation. As I stated earlier, we are funding an additional school resource officer for the Hebron Elementary Schools. That's in the town's portion of the budget. Contractual salary increases and compensation adjustments. We're also facing some technology and computer services, including our cyber security. And then retirements resulting in increased staffing requirements. What that means is we have a few people that are going to retire, like Randy Blaze, who serves as our fire marshal and our building official. We're not going to get one person to that is certified to do both of those. So now we have to look for a full-time building official and a part-time fire marshal. So Kevin Kelly has given us some notice that he's going to retire. He's our Public Works Director and a WPCA administrator. So we're going to have to hire a full-time Public Works Director and look for a part-time WPCA administrator. So there's, there's just a couple of examples of that bullet point. And then, of course, the Public Works Facility. Next slide is capital expenditures. So it's the CIP, general government contribution is eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. The capital expenditures from ten thousand to the seventy five thousand dollar class, that's two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty seven. Revaluation is forty thousand. That's an annual contribution. And then the use of the ARPA funding has allowed the projects to be funded outside of the CIP and the capital project budgets. Next up is capital expenditures to ten thousand to the seventy five thousand. These are the projects. So here we're going to replace a dump body. We're trying to not buy just new trucks. We're trying to make them last longer. So the motor and the cab, the transmission, the drive chain are good, but because of the salt and the materials that we use on the road, it took its toll. So we're looking to replace just the dump body with the standing mechanism for that price of seventy three thousand, four hundred and fifty two dollars. We've been notified by the state that the Greenville Bridge needs to be replaced as in poor condition. So we're looking to do that in-house. That's why that's at thirty one thousand dollars for materials. And then the Department of Public Works roof needs to be repaired. We had a company, we've got an estimate for fifty thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars to do that. Next up would be the fire department, truck one-ten updates. They're looking for twenty thousand dollars to do some stuff to that. And then, once again, the company one roof repair, we got an estimate from the same company for twenty five thousand dollars to go up there and take care of that. And then we're trying to think outside of the box like Selectmen O'Connell used to say. I'm looking to replace two trucks. We're looking to get those from state surplus for the Parks and Recs Department. So I'm going to try to save some money by doing that. The CIP recommendations. You know, we can go through this quickly here, but we're going to review this on Tuesday. So the first one is the road resurfacing and road improvements at three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. We put the engineer and design public works facility in there for two hundred and forty five thousand dollars. We have to replace one truck. It's a small truck that does the lake area. It's a specialty truck. So it's truck fifty-two. It's a two thousand and seven. We're looking for two hundred and twenty six thousand, nine hundred and fifty six dollars to replace that. We're looking to replace rescue one-ten with a rescue pumper. This is the first year funding a hundred thousand dollars. We're going to look at lease purchasing and try to get any and all grants to help us offset the cost of that truck. And then we've got, we applied for a grant. We don't know if we have it yet, but if we do, we have to replace the Jones Street Culvert replacement. So it's the first year funding of the fifty five thousand dollars. So we put that in there and that totals a recommended CIP budget of nine hundred and forty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars. The CIP revenue recommendations, balance from previous appropriations. Two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, we have twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety six dollars. We have the Losop funding. It's down a little bit, sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Funding from other sources, the Public Safety Fund, that's an amortization we get to help us offset when we have to buy new police cars and stuff. So we put that in there every year. We got a little bit of interest of a thousand dollars. Then we're looking for the general fund contribution of the eight thirty eight, seven sixty, which will come to the total of nine hundred and forty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty six dollars. So you can see these are where the revenues came back from. We get two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars left over from the large dump truck, seven hundred and fifty from the mini excavator, and we sold that roll-off. We did pretty good. We got twenty four thousand, five hundred dollars for that. And as soon as the gentleman got that out of here, they're, they're putting a new motor in it. So it was perfect timing. This is just an explanation of the Hebron Boards of Education. There's their fiscal two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. There's the increase. That's a fourteen point five seven percent or one million, seven seventy-eight, one, seven, six. Hebron Board of Education, town provided services to the Hebron Board of Education, which is in kind services, school resource officer, additional police coverage, snow plowing, including labor materials, grounds maintenance, including labor materials, HM Youth and Family Services, budget allocation, capital projects funded through CIP and capital project budgets in ARPA funds. For an example, because somebody had asked me this question, is why this is here, the in-kind services last year were a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. The Ram levy, proposed Ram budget. As you can see, there's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then there's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's one point four four one or one million, four, four, one, one, two, four of an increase. That's a four point seven per six percent. Hebron's changed based on the two thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four levy is brings it up to forty nine point four two percent. And that's one million, three ninety-three, four twenty-one. That's without the debt. Hebron's levy is total is fifteen million, six seventy-four, seven sixty-three. That includes five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for their CIP. This is just a calculation so everybody can see the levy, how it works for the three towns. So you have Andover through the years. You can see they're going down. Hebron, you can see we're going back up. And Marlboro kind of staying the same. So that's why the increase is so large to Hebron. This is an expenditure history. This shows you the percentages typically. This is the slide that I was talking about that shows it broken out by entity. So you have the Hebron Board of Education broken out. You have the Ram levy operating in debt and you have the total budget. So that breaks that out. Town government. Contribution to CIP, the contribution to capital projects, contribution to revaluation, the open space, and then the debt service. We always have these colorful bar slides or bar charts, pictures worth a thousand words. You can see the expenditure history. Look at that. And then our famous famous pie chart is up next. So fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget overview, Ram Board makes up thirty-eight percent or thirty-four point six percent of total increase. The pie shows you the Ram debt. Town government is twenty-eight percent or a twenty-one point eight percent of the total increase. And it shows you the town debt, capital expenditures in an open space. Then in the bottom corner, you have the Hebron Board of Education. It's a thirty-four percent or forty-three point five percent of the total increase to this proposed budget. Next would be proposed revenues, increases and decreases. So this number is going to move around a little bit. We, we put this together based on the October information. We got October first. So general government. We know we're going to need to adjust this at some point, but you know, especially with the motor vehicle cap reimbursement every other year. So you get the total government, see the difference for a hundred and six thousand and sixty-one dollars. That's a thirteen point four eight percent. Other state revenues. ECS, special ed grant funding. You can see that's down two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars or a four point seven three percent decrease. Unassigned debt. Management contribution, I'm recommending the same amount at this time as we did last year. And then the back taxes, we're, you know, this is a tougher year than it was last year collecting taxes. So at the present time, we've got it at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be collected. That's fifty thousand dollars difference than the year prior to or previous prior to. That's eleven point seven six percent swing. So then you have the tax revenue, which shows you what has to be made up with, you know, taxes. There it is. And it shows you the difference. The four, three, one, two, seven, five, six, or fourteen point nine, seven percent. Or at the bottom, that's what brings the total budget to that eleven point oh two percent increase. October first of two thousand and twenty-two grand list, the grand list comparative tools, I'm sorry, totals. So you have the real estate. You can see the change in that. You have the personal property. You see the change in that. You got the motor vehicles. That's a four point nine four percent difference. At the bottom, it's a one point seven five percent. The grand list account comparisons. You can see that over twenty-one, twenty-two, the change in the percentage, the real estate, the personal property, and then the motor vehicle. Another bar chart, the grand list profile. Through the years, the asterisk at the bottom depicts a revaluation year, a reval year. One year we had reval was supposed to go down and went up. So we kind of worked backwards on a set one year. But you can see it's, it's going back up. Next is how to calculate the mill rate. So the adjusted grand list divided by a thousand dollars equals the memory. So eight hundred and twenty-five million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars divided by a thousand brings the mill rate value at this point in the budget at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Tax revenue divided by the mill rate equals mill rate. Mill rate at ninety-eight point fifty percent or five oh percent collection rate is eight hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So twenty-nine million, five eighty-three, eight twenty-three divided by eight thirteen, one eighty-nine equals the thirty-six point thirty-eight mills today, which that would constitute a four point six eight mill increase over today's mill rate, which is thirty-one point seven oh. I think that's the highest in twenty years. Calculate real estate tax amounts. So you got the sex value, assessed value times the mill rate equals your tax. So the average house, you know, in town, if it's a two hundred and forty-eight thousand or assessed at two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars times a zero, I'm sorry, point zero three six three eight equals nine thousand, zero thirty-five. That would be the taxing. So the mill rate calculation, real estate and personal property is listed here. So the grand list, real estate, personal property, man list, October first, eight twenty, eight hundred and twenty-five million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-one. Last of the board assessment appeals, hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy reductions to grand list, adjusted grand list, October first, two thousand and twenty-two, eight hundred and twenty-five million, five seventy-two, seven ninety-one. The mill value, eight twenty-five, five seventy-three. And the mill value based upon the ninety-eight point five oh percent collection rate is eight hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which once again gives you the mill rate that's being proposed today for the thirty-six point three eight. So this is the telltale chart or the slide. This is the proposed tax calculations on the three houses we use each year for the budget to try to give an indicator of what the increase of your taxes would be. So the lower, the lower valued house or the market valued house at two thirty-five, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. The assessed value is one sixty-four, seventy, ten, and two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three. Their taxes were five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. This budget proposed way it is would be five thousand, nine ninety-two or an increase of seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. The average home, which is the middle home, market value at three fifty-four, eight hundred, or an assessed value of two forty-eight, three sixty, their taxes were seven thousand, eight seventy-three. With this budget today, it would be nine thousand, thirty-five dollars, which would be eleven hundred and sixty-two dollar increase. And then the bottom one, once again, speaks for itself. Six hundred and thirteen thousand dollar home. That would, their taxes would go up two thousand and nine dollars. The budget stays the way it is. The mill rate calculation on the motor vehicle, this is where we had to go to school because we're over that motor vehicle cap. So the grand list now, we're going to have to send out two, two two tax bills at different, different mill rates. So the grand list, October first, two thousand and twenty-two. The motor vehicle is a hundred and eleven million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Less the Board of Assessment Appeals adjustment was to five twenty-one, one sixty-five reductions to the grand list, adjusted grand list, October first, hundred and eleven million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So the motor vehicle mill rate is one, 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 or a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars based on the ninety-eight point five oh percent collection rate. It's a hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars or a mill rate proposed budget of thirty-two point four six mills, which it's capped at that. Proposed tax calculation, motor vehicle. We just, we kind of just tried to help to show like we do with the houses. Last year, if, if the average vehicle we found was at Ford F-150, the assessed value was twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. They paid in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars in taxes. It's, it's going to go down this year because of depreciation. And then, of course, the mill rate's capped as well. So that's why it, it went down. It'll be like a sixty thousand dollar, sixty dollars less than this year's coming budget. That's just how that works. The mill rate history. This is another chart. We like charts, bar charts. Once again, the asterisk reveals the revaluation years. So you can see I think the highest we were was that thirty-seven point four four back in eighteen, nineteen. And then we, we went down continuously. And then we had revaluation this year, which went way down. But now we're proposing a thirty-six point three eight. Budget process, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, review the budget during the month of March. The Board of Selectmen make your recommendation to the Board of Finance by March thirty-first. The budget process, the Select will conduct a public hearing Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven PM. Virtual meeting, Board Second Board of Finance. There's the address and the the information to log on to those meetings. This will all be on the website. We'll put all this, the summary and the PowerPoint will go up on the And the PowerPoint will go up on the, on the, if it's not already there, no one done. It's probably already there. Uh, the board of finance will hold a public hearing on the board of finance recommended budget no later than the third Tuesday in April. The budget hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven P M. Budget process is Tuesday. Uh, per section nine oh three, the town charter referendum vote on the town budget and the capital improvement budget on Tuesday, May second. Starts at six A M. In the morning till eight P M. At night, Hebron Elementary School. We're hoping to have an exit poll there to get the flavor of the taxpayers voting if it, just in case it gives some direction to the town and the board of, and the board of finance. God forbid, if the budget doesn't, doesn't prevail. Then we have the budget review schedule as listed there, Tuesday, March seventh. Tuesday, March fourteenth, March twenty-first, March twenty-eighth. And information and comments, the second have established an email address for budget comments. Hebrew budget at hebronct.com. Comments will be forwarded to the boards of selectment, finance and education. Budget information is available in the town clerk's office, the Douglas Library, the senior center. And at hebronct.com budget information. And we want to hear from you. And now. I'll try with myself and my trusted staff to answer the questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Tiffany.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. I have a question regarding uh, the exit poll. Um, have we traditionally done that after every budget referendum? And I'm curious what the reasoning is if we haven't done it in the past, why we'd like to bring it back this year.
Well, it's just a suggestion on my part to answer your question. We haven't done it on every referendum, but we've done it. On a few. Uh, I don't know. Donna might know how many we did, but we did it. I don't know, three or four times, but.
I think we did a total of five and we did um. Several years ago, and we do have all of the summaries and results of those exit polls available if anybody is interested. Um, we stopped conducting exit polls because we added the mandatory advisory questions. Through a charter revision, and then we had for several years. The um advisory questions on the ballot. And then with the last charter revision, we did away with those advisory questions. And we haven't res, we haven't resumed um. Exit polls in the past couple of years because we didn't feel that there would be the need for it.
Well, I, I'd argue last year there was probably a need for it, given that the budget almost failed. I mean, the budget last year only passed by two votes. Anecdotally, I can say, speaking from my experience with individuals, it was because the education budget was cut that that's why people were voting it down. So all this to say, I'm a big fan of exit polls. I think they're helpful. Um, I'd like to maybe with my fellow selectmen, once we get through the budget, dive into a discussion as to why advisory questions were done away with because I think they can be helpful. Um, but. That answers my questions for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, it would be the selectman's choice on that. And it was just a recommendation at this point, but that's totally the selectman's approval, whether you do that or not.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I've got a number. Sorry. I know. Here he goes. I don't know if people have read through, but there is a summary and one of the things on there and I don't know. Andy wants to, to get into it a little bit, but uh, the state does have. Uh, I want to say it's the municipal. The municipal revenue sharing grant. Which is given to communities, but the thing is they are locked into, I believe it's a two point five percent. Overall budget increase over the, the previous fiscal year. Is that basically our accurate?
Yeah, there's, it, it's a, it's a new thing that we're hitting it now. So it's called the spending cap. And it's at two point five percent more uh, cost of living increase, which I think is a six point one eight or whichever one's higher. So what that does is with this budget, we're definitely over that, that cap. So we would be in jeopardy of receiving. And Elaine can help me correct me. I think it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the municipal revenue sharing fund. Um, that we wouldn't get, we, we would, because we're over that. We're, we're over the two point five percent of last year's budget.
We're over the two point five, so we're, we're, we're in jeopardy of losing the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant. And we could also be fined, but it is the six point one eight is the inflationary cost that is being advised now. From O P M., which is greater than the two and a half, but we still exceed the six point one eight percent as well.
Yeah. Could we, yeah, maybe uh, by our next meeting, get an idea of what that, that amount would be?
Maybe so to not exceed the spending cap?
Yes.
I think you're looking at about a million eight. Am I correct, Elaine?
Yes, sir, you are. A million eight, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars to be exact.
Okay. Now, does the special education costs uh, from the schools factor into that dollar amount?
You can back those out, and we didn't have this year's numbers. I didn't, I couldn't, I didn't find them in the presentation, so we used last year's numbers.
Okay. So they weren't, okay. So they, they, they weren't given to us, okay.
I didn't see them. Maybe, maybe I didn't find them. Elaine, did we ask for those numbers or? I couldn't find them, so we just used last year's number to kind of get some answers for it tonight.
I didn't find it in their budget presentation, and no, I didn't ask specifically for those numbers. From the business manager or the superintendent today, there wasn't enough time for that, but we can certainly follow up with that for next week's meeting.
Okay, and then also I, I would assume RAM would be similar uh, in their, in their um, special education things. Yeah, I mean, I.
There are regional school district, Dan, so we can't take advantage of directly backing those figures out of our budget.
Okay. I mean, because I mean, it sounds like we're going to be adversely penalized because of a uh. Numbers of students shift. Which does not seem fair. Uh, no, everybody says nothing is fair, but um, I mean, their, their four point whatever percent budget increase. Seems, you know, on, on first, the first blush, reasonable. You know, the amount of dollar shift to Hebron because of a student population change. Does not seem uh, proper. Uh, and, and you know, it just, yeah, we're being penalized because more kids are going there. Um, is really what it boils down to. You know, but as I say, that kind of amount, even our own, you know, increase seems, you know, sadly fairly reasonable. I have to admit that I was. Pretty sadly surprised with the board of Ed's uh, you know, fourteen point plus uh, budget request. And I'm hoping that they revisit that. Uh, it's, it's, you know, these kinds of numbers, especially in today's world where everything is going up, electricity, uh, everything. Um, is just going to be, you know, it's going to be a, a, a non-starter for a lot of people. This. This could put people over the edge. Um, and sadly, I think we're going to have to make some serious and very hard decisions myself. Uh, anybody else have anything else on, on this? And then as I say, uh. Board of Finance. I guess not. Okay, well, our.
Uh, Dan, sorry. I'm late. Just trying to get my microphone on.
Okay, hello.
Hi, I did send a letter to Heather tonight, uh, asking for more information. So um. Yeah, we'll see if they're uh, amenable to providing that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Peter.
Andy, um, I just, just thinking about your comments in your, the budget message. And I know it's not in your purview to decide or influence, but it's the board of finances, but you note that. The um, as the numbers are presented today, the numbers we need to come down and present a budget taxpayers will support. I'm interested in your opinion. Again, I understand it's not in your purview, but you have an opinion as to. In that area?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not here to criticize anybody's budgets. I just know, I always work backwards. If anybody knows me, I work from the millway backwards. And historically. I mean, you're lucky to get two mills out of, out of the voting booth. I, I don't think we, we've ever gotten four. I'm not saying that. Maybe that won't happen, but. Historically, you can look at the mill rates and you can see what gets approved. One point seven five, maybe two mills. I, and that's not just Hebron. That's, you know, a lot of, a lot of towns, but that's just my. My experience, uh, at least while I've been sitting in the seat here, which has been, you know, over ten years now, but. You know, East Hampton's budget, same thing. They, you try to get up around two, two mil increase. That's, that's, people start getting biting your lower lip a little bit. So I, I don't know. That's my opinion as you stated.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking for an opinion. I mean, you made, you made a comment, so I'm, I'm interested in your opinion. As you said, you've sat in the seat for a long time and. And I, I think, you know, at first blush. That the average Hebron taxpayer would have a hard time with this. I agree with that. And so, you know, our job and obviously the board of finances to, to get into the details and we start to ask the questions and. And do some more due diligence, but nonetheless, it's because we have a longer road um, to travel here, most likely. Um, I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if no one else has any. I hear.
Yeah, sorry, I put my thing. This is Jan Fadaski. Um, question for Andy. So the um. The cars, you know, the personal property and stuff like that. That's tr- truly not impacted until we get to thirty-two mills, correct?
Right.
Whatever we're taking off, that percentage of it doesn't, isn't impacted.
I'm not sure I understand the question. So the money that we're not gonna.
Yeah.
The money we're not going to receive, it will be shifted over to the personal property and the real estate. Once they cap out at that thirty-two mills, we have to make up that lost revenue. So we're going to add that to what we need to make up in tax dollars. They don't, we don't get a reimbursement every year for the difference. If, if they send a, a, a check every other year, and it, it depends on. Where, where we come in, but we would, we would have to shift that burden onto the real estate and, and real property to make up that difference.
Oh, so that's what you do? You just put it on to the real estate?
Yeah, unfortunately. So that.
Oh, I thought it was. Excuse me?
That's when it's a good time to rent. You know, you're not going to get, you're not going to see that increase, but it'll, it'll shift over. Uh, that's where there'll be two bills going out. One will be for your assess, assessment on your motor vehicle, and the other one will be for your real estate and real property.
Yeah, I guess my question was more like, so if we, if we lower the mill rate. It really is only impacting property taxes, you know, houses.
Right.
That, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah. Welcome.
Uh, yes, Peter.
Hello, I see. Mark, did you, you have your microphone on. Were you going to ask something? I don't want to jump in front of you. I've already asked the question. Okay, I'll go. Um, so Andy, just, I, I'm sorry to sort of do this in a stuttered step manner, but you had mentioned that um. Uh, some compensation adjustments and obviously contractual salary increases are, are what they are contractual salary increases, but. I know in years past that, you know, we had looked to um, right-size some of the areas and. Do you anticipate compensation adjustments beyond contractual salary increases continuing in beyond this budget? Cycle and is that, is that a long-term objective or just a one-time?
No, great question. This is the second year of a two-year commitment. What, what brought this upon us is last year. We lost three skilled people out of public works and a couple skilled people out of the fire department. And the reason they all left in the accident view was they took the same jobs in another municipality. Uh, to give you an example, um, Andover was hiring a new, new highway maintenance person. Uh, brand new guy to start was making the same amount of money as a twenty-year veteran here in Hebron at the public works department. So. Through the salary survey, we were out of whack. Same thing with the police department and also the firefighter maintainers. So we, we made like a two-year commitment to try to um. You know, bring it up. And then another thing that put a wrinkle in it is the minimum wage. We have all these part-timers. We had to bring up the minimum wage, so that's driving a little bit of this. And then our, our van drivers at the senior center are only making like fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour, which all the other surrounding towns are paying like twenty. So we're not bringing them up to twenty, but we're, we're getting them closer than the fifteen, sixteen. So we're trying to. You know, bring it up, but one, one thing I like to pat the town of Hebron on the back is. We've saved a ton of money with Randy having him fill those dual positions and, and Kevin Kelly doing dual positions. And Willie Bell, when he was both the A C O. And the building maintenance guy. So. We're going to feel, we're going to feel that pain now that these people are retiring. We're going to have to replace them with full-time and then a part-time person. So we had years and years of financial benefit that we're losing, and that's, that's another thing that's showing up in this budget to answer your question.
So do we have other people like that that had dual roles that we can anticipate having to unbundle in, in the next two to three years?
Not so much the dual role, but um. You know, there are some other key employees that are possibly talking about retirement, uh, skilled. Uh, where it's, it's, the, the market out there is really hard to find. The caliber of person you want, like whether it be a town manager, finance director, public works director, assessor, building official. Fire marshal. Those are all very, very hard positions. And what's going on now in the real world is called poaching. You're, you're, you, you almost have to find somebody that's doing a good job. And entice them with a benefit package that it would bring them here to at least, you know, fulfill what the town needs.
So you see this pressure based on market conditions and pending retirements continuing to be on the town government going forward and to some degree.
Yeah, we're having conversations. I was in a meeting yesterday with Crog. Uh, and we have some county government people that came into the state from county governments and. You know, we're, we're possibly looking at, um, just like the health district we belong to. Maybe they're going to start up a, a building official district. And they'll assign people to us like the Chatham Health District does to cover Hebron, and that way. It's less of a burden than the town taking on the whole employee, the benefits package and everything like that. Uh, I think Chatham Health works great for the towns that belong, and they're, they're going to model. You know, what they're talking about is modeling it, something like that. Crog would run it. They'd have a, they'd have a supervisor that would oversee the people. But the people would come to the towns and work out of the towns like, like the Chatham Health District people do. So we're always looking to try to lessen the blow, but as of right now, we had to plug these numbers into, in the budget. So that's, that's kind of what's driving that.
Thank you.
Uh, Tiffany, can you hold on one second? I think Mark had a question. I, I, I believe I saw him flash across as a raised hand. Mark? Go ahead, Tiffany.
We tried, right?
Yep.
Um, Andy, I'd like to know who, um, who does an analysis of the compensation and benefits for the town?
What we do, I do that in my office. That falls underneath my preview. What we do with that is we use a salary survey that's conducted every year through C C M. Through the hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state of Connecticut, and it's divided up by population. A few other things, years of service, uh, dependent upon if those people are uh, wearing dual hats, things like that. So we, we get a, we get a pretty good. Salary survey for towns our size, towns bigger, towns smaller, and we can actually seek out the main dane. What, what they're going right. So a perfect example is a building official talking with Crog yesterday. I had it at a hundred thousand. Uh, they've got it at a hundred and six. Uh, fi- uh, fire chief uh, for a town a little bit bigger than. Uh, fi- uh, fire chief, uh, for a town a little bit bigger than Hebron. 104,000 to start. I added at 100. So it wa- so it shows me that I'm kind of right there with, with what these professional organizations are doing as well, just at least on those two positions.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go back to Mark.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just had a comment. We, we've been talking a lot over the past year about having affordable housing and making access to Hebron accessible. If we raise taxes like this, even if people could afford the, the houses, they couldn't live here. So that kind of defeats, defeats a purpose. It's something we're really shooting for. So I just wanted to make that comment. All, all of these are trade-offs and they're at odds with each other. And everybody's gonna have to give a little and compromise. And we're gonna have to get what we need, not just what we want. This is the toughest year since I've been here with the most increases. And, um, it's gonna be a very difficult time for everybody. That's just my comment.
Thank you. And you're right. I mean, the state mandates and they come up with some of these different formulas. But then the real world monetarily is, is outpacing what, what they had thought of when, when they were making some of these rules, regulations, and yet we're stuck with having to try to live within them. And um, this is, this is reality. And I agree with you. There's gonna be some mighty hard decisions that are gonna have to be made. So anyway, any other questions? Anything, uh, Mel? Microphone. Microphone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, just one, one statement I'd like to make, uh, and it's not, it, it's not based on, on, uh, my position on the budget right now, because, uh, I don't think we have enough, I don't think I have enough information to really take a position or, or, um, you know, criticize or, well, I guess the only thing I would, uh, state in favor of is the Board of Education adding uh, pre-K. That being said, I don't think I know enough about most anything else to, to comment at this time. I don't want the, the public to think that, uh, you know, myself as a member of Board of Finance doesn't know what, what to do with this budget. I do recognize it needs to come down. I'm just not sure where yet. And the fact is that, uh, I think we need to hear the details from the department heads. Um, I mean, Andy's was, was a great summary, but, uh, you know, the truth is in the details. So I think we really need to get into that before we can, uh, take a position on any particular area of the budget. I don't see anything currently based on what we've discussed tonight that, that really, you know, puts a red light up in front of me. Uh, but I am looking forward to hearing to, from the rest of the, uh, department heads and from the superintendents, so we can kind of put this stuff all into perspective. And I agree with Mark. This is probably the toughest year. I've been doing this for 17 years and this is the toughest year yet. Thank you for, uh, for the time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, I, I see Mr. Manis has his hand up. Normally, normally we would not take, um, comments from outside of the boards. But I'll leave it up. Thumbs up or thumbs down?
You got public comment coming right up.
Okay, uh, okay, Mr. Manis, we're gonna, we're gonna blend it between public comment and what have you. Yes, sir. Go ahead. You're on microphone, uh, mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Andy, just a couple of clarifying questions if I could. It was on a discussion on the RAM budget. Did you, how much did you say the the debt service was reduced with RAM this year?
I don't have that right in front of me. Don or Elaine, do you have that right in front of you? I can find it.
It was close to half a million, but I wasn't
Yeah, 500 and 500 and something thousand. It's on the, it's on the fr- the front sheet I found.
Okay, so it's safe to conclude that with a half a million decrease, we're still going up quite a bit, which all things being equal, this budget increase would be larger that that was not included in the budget sheet. And the other question is, the part-time payroll for the policeman, 136,153 dollars plus or minus. Is that for the school resource officer?
I have to ask Elaine. I don't know if she put them in the part-time. Elaine?
$150,000 on the slide was for in-kind services. That's for the current SRO officer for snow removal. Um, all the things that are done for the schools that are on the town government's budget. It's mostly the school resource officer, which is about 83,000, and then the rest is like, like I said, snow removal, um, it's some of the services that are rendered by the finance office with them. That's just a culmination of in-kind services. In this budget though, as well, in addition to the in-kind services for the town government is a second school resource officer for about $83,000.
Thank you, Elaine.
Diane?
And Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, were you all set?
Elaine answered the question. I wanted to make sure that the second resource officer was budgeted. Thank you.
And then the answer
And some of this, as we get into the budgets, you know, tonight was just an overview. Uh, you know, so I, I don't want to start getting into specific, uh, areas or, or, um, entities, because they all will be coming before us. This was just really a budget overview just so that everybody kind of had an idea as to some of what we're up against. So I, I, I'm really trying not to get into, uh, the, the, you know, the tax of, of the individual things. Any other questions? If not, like to roll right over into our regularly scheduled Board of Selectiveness meeting. Um, and start out with, with, uh, I'm sorry, I'm multitasking. I apologize. So put that off to the side. I'll be coming.
Uh, Dan, uh, I'm not sure if anybody called to order the Board of Finance. Well, I was delayed. Because I think we can adjourn at this point, right?
You can adjourn. It wasn't officially called to order, but you did have a quorum. So you can adjourn.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance.
I'll second it now.
Thank you, Mel.
Thank, thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? I don't know of any, so. Andy?
No, I was just doing something on my computer.
I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, then our next would be our public comment. I don't see or hear any. So we'll move on to the town manager's report, please.
Okay, moving right along. So we got snow earlier in the week and we're gearing up for another event Friday night into Saturday. It was the first snow of the season. I think the guys did pretty well. Um, I won't steal Peter's thunder, but we had the first meeting with the survey committee. I got that kicked off and left them to do their work. Um, they got sworn in and I'll let Peter deal with that under liaison reports if he wants. As I stated with you, I was in a lengthy conversation, uh, meeting with Crog regarding, uh, regionalization of certain entities. One would be ACO, one would be building official. And, and to be clear, what this is, is, uh, Crog is our regional, our hub. They've gotten grants for, for this types of things. So it, it would be like a three-year uh, grant where they could assist us. And then the third year, the town would, you know, pick up pretty much, uh, the port, the portion that the town would need, like a per capita charge similar to what we do with the, the health district. Um, so that's a shot in the arm. Maybe we can utilize some of that. We're gonna try. So that'll be ongoing. I'll be busy doing that. We did approve a Chatham Health budget, so those numbers that we're using are real. I got voted on this week. Uh, as we're getting ready for the Maple Fest, it's just a couple of weeks away. Hopefully the weather cooperates with us. And, uh, I've been working with the building committee on quite a, quite a few projects. Uh, getting things moving here. And then we're gonna start working, uh, get together some specs on, on that gym floor for the school and try to get that moving along. So a lot of stuff going on. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next would be, uh, actually, we really don't have any old business that needs to be discussed tonight unless anybody has anything they want to bring up. Nope. Okay, moving into new business. We have our award for a contract for the facilities evaluation.
Yeah, so once again, speaking about working with the building committee, this is the town Hebron's recently conducted an RFP slash Q for proposals for municipal facilities evaluations and received proposals from three firms. The summary is attached. Please see the attached letter of recommendation from the public building committee with a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion, open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen award the contract for the municipal facilities evaluation to, uh, Bureau Vert- Vertias of yeah. Oh, Owings Mills, Maryland? Owings Mills, Maryland, in the amount of $49,933.72. And authorize Andrew J. Turney, Town Manager, to sign any necessary documents. Um, did anybody want to know anything more about that? I believe both Andy and Mel had, uh, met with this, with this, uh, company and I think they were both impressed.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, I'd like to understand exactly what we're contracting this firm to do, um, and how it fits in with a yearly or bi-annual, you know, look at our facilities, particularly given, you know, particularly given we're talking about a potential new facility. So exactly which facilities is this organization going to review? Is this bi-annual, annual? I'd like to have further understanding on what we're spending this money for. Thank you.
Okay. Andy or Mel? Now I know Mel has his hand up.
Let him take it.
Go ahead, Mel.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's good questioning Tiffany. Uh, and that was kind of leading into where I was going anyways. This is an interesting, uh, it was, we were surprised to get this, uh, this proposal. Uh, our budget, as you know, uh, was $50,000. Um, the other two proposals we got, one was for 177,000 and the other was for 300 and I think 325,000 dollars. And we wondered what they were looking at, and then we wondered how this proposal could be so different. This is a company that all they do is they do evaluations and then they work with their customers going forward. And the way they work with their customers, well, let, let me start by answering Tiffany's question. They are not somebody that, uh, will be managing our facilities or our facility plans, uh, going forward. This is a essentially the evaluation piece that they're doing is, is kind of a one-time shot. They will go into all of our facilities. They will talk to people within the facilities. They will review, uh, the, all the equipment, all the, uh, HVAC equipment, all the electricals, uh, all the mechanicals within the building. Uh, they take into consideration the life, life cycle, how long they normally last. They take into consideration what type of maintenance has been provided on a preventive uh, basis as well as, uh, what type of emergency, uh, type broken situations we've had, like the flood in the, the library a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they will then issue not only a report, but they will provide us with a database that'll have several thousand points in it about each particular unit in each particular building. For instance, if, uh, uh, Gilead Hill School has, uh, three rooftop units. There will be information for each one of those units as to condition they're in, the life cycle they're in, uh, work that needs to happen, specific work that needs to happen as well as a preventive maintenance type, uh, uh, thing. The, uh, preventive maintenance schedule that needs to be, or should be accomplished every year, to be very honest with you. Um, and, and since I've been assigned to the, uh, Town Building Committee, we don't do a lot of preventive maintenance and, uh, discussion for a different time, uh, and, and it's resource-based. It's not that we're intentionally not doing it. It's that we just don't have the manpower. So this database not only will be what they find, but it will be available to us uh, from the time they complete their report, which right now they're saying if we were to, if you were to approve tonight and they were to get started, it'll be done by June 1st. They have specialists. Everybody that, that comes on site will be either an architect, an engineer, or an engineer of a particular, whether it be an electrical, a mechanical, um, engineer, eh, you know, specialists that deal with this, uh, this type of equipment in their daily, daily lives and are trained to be able to evaluate it. Uh, the database will be available for us to put in work that we do. Uh, projects that we complete. Um, equipment that we replace. Uh, and it, it will actually give us what we've needed for a long time, a historical, uh, reference to any piece of equipment in any building. Now, we haven't quite figured out, and I say we, uh, because this is the building committee along with, with, uh, the town administration. We haven't figured out how we will maintain that, who will maintain that. Um, and, and how often we'll, we'll try to update it. But, but it's something that we would never get from anyone locally. And the, the reason I bring locally in is because most of the time when you put these uh, requests for proposals out, you get local architects, local engineers. And very often, uh, they come in, they make their evaluation, and I'm not saying their evaluations are, are wrong or they're flawed. But they're consultant and quite honestly, not only are they looking to evaluate your, your facilities and your equipment, they're also looking for follow-on work. This company does not do follow-on work. So they won't come in and say, oh, you got a problem with a rooftop unit at, uh, Hebron Elementary School, and then six months later be bidding on a, a project to replace that unit. This is truly a, an objective look, uh, and they've, and they've done work in schools. They've done work in public buildings. They've done work in private buildings. They're very well experienced. They have a, uh, a wide array of, of, uh, places that they've worked within Connecticut. They also do sign on, for instance, with Danbury, Connecticut, where they are their facilities manager. Danbury's just so large that, that they can't handle it with one person. Uh, because that one person may be very busy at one time and have nothing the next time. So these people are kind of like, uh, pay-as-you-go. Not suggesting that's a follow-on to this, but, but the fact is, is they have the ability to do all sorts of work. So I think that, uh, Tiffany, does that answer your question?
Um, sort of. So I have some brief follow-up questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Once we get this database, you know, or do we have access to it permanently, right? Like, I mean, you know, you don't want
You have access to it permanently, yes.
Permanently. And, um, I'd like to understand from the town manager where the money's coming from to pay for this.
It was budgeted in that, um, five, that 10,000 to 75,000, I believe, in the capital project. So we, we had budgeted that money.
Last year. Last year, that was in last year's CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask a quick follow up? Correct me if I'm wrong, are we not required to do like a, some sort of feasibility study? Every so many years?
No, not on facilities were not. This was done in two thousand and ten, the same type of study was done in two thousand and ten. And the building committee has picked up, had picked up. Several of the projects from the two thousand and ten study. It was then followed up with, I'm trying to think of the year was eighteen or seventeen or eighteen, two thousand seventeen or two thousand and eighteen. Where Randy and Joe Summers went back and revisited and reevaluated some of the things that. It was actually done by Silver Petroselli in two thousand and ten. Then Andy, then Randy and Joe did a follow up to that in the late teens. And updated the list that the building committee has been working off of. So though it's not required. It, it's very helpful. To keep an eye on what's going on. It's always cheaper to fix a problem. Before it becomes an emergency than to wait for something to break and then fix it.
Maybe that's what I was thinking, because I know that, yeah, I know we've, you know, talked about it every so many years, it seems to come up. So I thought it was, okay, thank you.
Not required, but it's, it's kind of standard practice.
Okay, I'm sorry Tiffany, go ahead. Anyone else? Okay, hearing the motion. Without a further discussion, all of, yes, Peter.
Just getting ready to cast my vote.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Uh, Peter?
You Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be the Revenue Recovery Service Agreement with Certified Ambulance Group.
Yes, there's a memo with this, Mr. Chairman. Peter Starko Fire Chief is recommending the change in. Provider for ambulance billing from shared response to Certified Ambulance Group attached is an agreement between the town of Hebron. And Certified Ambulance Group Inc., which has been reviewed by the town attorney. The town attorney has also recommended. Option of the attached business association agreement. The proposal is for a five year term and there's a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen award the contract for ambulance billing to Certified Ambulance Group of Rocky Hill, Connecticut. And authorize Andrew J. Attorney Town Manager to sign the Revenue Recovery Service Agreement. And the Business Associate Agreement between the Town of Hebron Fire Department and Certified Ambulance Group Incorporated. Open it up for discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I'm wondering if through you, Mr. Chairman, if the town manager can explain why the change in. In vendor, just so we can have a better understanding of why for the, the reason for the shift. Totally trust the decision. I just like to understand why.
Yeah, well, it came from the Fire Chief to me. He was looking to it and he thinks that we can do a little bit better with this. This vendor, we had this vendor years ago and we got away from them. I explained that to him and the reasons why, but he says they've got new people. And they're the star organization that's out there today. So he thinks we could do better with them with a different percentage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I want to say that's like a five point five percent is what I think I read, but I actually read this whole thing. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Uh, Peter?
You Casper, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Next would be the NCAAA. Hebron Outreach and Social Support Services Grant Application.
Right, so these come to you every year. These are a big help in the senior center activities. Last year we got, we were presently supply, surprising, got more money than we did the following year. So let's see how we do this year. So there's three of them here. They're calling the triple A grants. I think Sharon's here. Sharon, you want to speak to this quickly, Sharon?
I'll mention that this year they have, in addition to the federal older Americans Act funds, some ARPA funds. So I'm increasing the amount that I'm seeking from each of the three grants, hoping that again. They'll be favorably awarded. So the outreach grant. Provides a variety of services to connect people with the various resources. That they may be eligible for. We have a new social worker who just started with us the day after Martin Luther King Day. Her name is Michelle Bowden. She is fantastic and already is doing a wonderful job with reaching out to. Seniors in the community. I'll mention that for just statistical purposes. In two thousand and twenty, the percentage of older Americans, which older Americans Act considers anybody sixty and up. An older American, so twenty three point eight percent of Hebron was people sixty and up. And of that. Twelve point three percent were people over the age of eighty, who are the people who most frequently would be in need of. Outreach services and our transportation services. By two thousand and thirty five. We're looking at the population of sixty plus residents in Hebron going to thirty one point seven percent. And the amount of people eighty plus, twenty one point five percent. So that's from twelve point three percent, that eighty plus group in two thousand and twenty to two. Twenty one point five percent in two thousand and thirty five. So again, that's a population that is going to have more and more need. Not sure if there's any questions regarding the outreach grant itself.
Well, I'll read the proposed motion and we'll see if there's any further discussion after that. Move to the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of. Thirty eight thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars with fifty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars. Of in kind matching funds from the Hebron Center or Hebron Senior Center Budget. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, North Central Agency, Area Agency on Aging Incorporated. Hebron Outreach Information, Assistance and Referral. And Social Support Services Project Grant and that Town Manager Andrew J. Attorney be authorized to apply for. Accept and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents. So. This is one of three and this is basically a yearly thing. So anybody have any other questions or whatever? Okay, hearing none.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Don't be sorry. Thank you for leading. The Senior Citizen Campaign, if you'd want to call it that. They're the most underserved population in Hebron. I appreciate all the good work that you guys do over there and I'm in support of anything that, that. Gives, gives our, our seniors a better quality of life and security and a sense that we're here to. Value them and protect them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor? Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Next. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another triple A grant, North Central Area Agency on Aging. NC triple A Hebrew therapeutic activity. I don't know if you wanted a quick narrative from Sharon on this one as well?
My, yes, please.
Okay, so the Area Agency on Aging has now. Gravitated towards any therapeutic recreation programs that they will be funding need to be evidence based. So all of the. Activity, therapeutic activity programs, you know, fitness programs. Now are evidence based programs. So again, we're trying to keep people healthy so that. They hopefully will have a longer, more quality life. I'll just mention too that with the, all of the in kind services for all three grants, the in kind services are. Percentage of existing services. So, you know, percentage of our utilities, percentage of our postage, you know. So again, there's no additional funds from the town being sought for the in kind services.
I'll make the motion, move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of. Fifteen thousand six hundred dollars with fifty two thousand seventy six dollars in in kind matching funds. From the Senior Center Budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, North Central A- Area Agency. On Aging Incorporated Hebron Therapeutic Activity Grant. And that Town Manager Andrew J. Attorney be authorized to apply for, accept and receive this grant. And to sign any necessary documents. Any questions? Yes, Peter?
Sharon, when you said, maybe I disconnected on you said evidence base, I, I, I didn't quite understand what that meant.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Evidence based programs are programs that have gone through rigorous study and been proven to have. A positive effect. So it's not just, you know, people are doing regular exercise and. Kind of saying, oh, I feel better. There's proof that there's been positive effects with the evidence based program.
Great, thank you.
Could you just maybe let us know maybe a couple of what some of the programs that the senior center offers on this?
Sure. So there are a couple of different programs. One of them, the primary program that. Has been in effect for the past several years that is extremely well received is called Enhanced Fitness. And again, it's three times a week, an hour per class. It's a, a program that again is evidence based, has been offered. Throughout the, throughout the US at a variety of locations, a lot of Y's, YMCA's, YWCAs offer this program. We also too have another program called Sail, which also is an evidence based program. Providing. Exercise three times a week. So. We also offer yoga. We have our fitness room. We have in the past offered Zumba. Right now we don't have a Zumba instructor, but we, if we have the opportunity, we will again. Offer Zumba.
Okay, great.
I just have, just have continued interest in this, so I apologize for lingering here, but Sharon's been so nice to wait. And so when you talked about the outreach in combine, in combination with the growing. Population of seniors, what are the, do you have challenges as you think about that outreach? You feel you're getting the, the connection with the seniors in town? What are the challenges there? That you're faced as you think about, you know, including more, whether it's facilities, whether it's communication, whether, you know, whatever it may be. I just, I'm just curious as to sort of how you perceive those challenges that are ahead of us with that growing population.
I think, I think the challenges are not inherent in, in, you know, anything that the town is doing. The challenges are that many of the programs that can benefit people have income. And asset eligibility criteria. And so sometime that means people are having to spend down. And, you know, that's, that's difficult for people to, to. Have to spend those resources till they get to a point where now they qualify for a state or federal program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
You Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. And we have, I think, one more. Again. Sharon, did you want to?
Okay, so the last one is our transportation service. We have a very broad service area for our transportation services. It encompasses thirty five towns. So we really try to accommodate the seniors as best we can. Go to Farmington to, you know, the VA Hospital in, in Newington. You know, Bloomfield where there's, you know, some, some of the Saint Francis doctors practice out of. So we, again, we. Norwich, so we try to again accommodate people as best we can. It's an on demand service, so meaning that somebody calls and requests the day and the time. That they are looking for to be transported. If we can't accommodate them, we always are willing to. Try to connect with their provider to try to see if we can work something out so that we can accommodate them. And I think many of you know, we have our two multi passenger handicapped accessible, accessible buses. One's a twenty passenger and one's a ten passenger and then we have our car. You may remember from past few years ago, we were awarded what's called a fifty three ten grant. To get another handicapped accessible bus, but because of the nationwide chip shortage, we're still waiting for that bus. So at some point we'll be getting that additional vehicle. And. Sure, what more I can tell you with the transportation grant?
Read the motion and open it up. Move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of forty two thousand. Three hundred and eight dollars with a seventy six thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollar in kind. Matching funds from the Hebron Van Budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four. North Central Air, uh, Agency on Aging Incorporated Hebron Transportation Project Grant. And that the Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney be authorized to apply for, accept and receive this grant. And to sign any necessary documents. Any questions? Hearing none. Tiffany, are you still on?
I am. Oh, wait, I think Peter has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
You don't have a question. All right, Tiffany Teal, aye.
Okay, Peter?
You Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. And I want to say thank you very much, Sharon. You do a great job and I'm so happy. To know that you found somebody for the, you know, they added other position. You've been looking for a long, long time. So.
I just want to add one more thing with transportation. Just again, it's not before you tonight, but just so you know that additionally, we do. Annually get a state award that's. Twenty four thousand one sixty eight. That's the, the max that we could get. So that again, helps with our transportation program.
Okay, perfect. Beautiful. Thank you. You're welcome. Have a safe weekend. Thank you.
You too.
Our next would be. The AHM Budget. the AHM budget. Attach this to proposed AHM budget. I don't know, Andy, did you want to get into this at all?
We can, we've got Mel here set on that meeting with me, but it's between you and Mel, but attaches the proposed AHM budget for the fiscal 2023-24 with Hebron share at two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, which will be incorporated into the town's budget with a proposed motion, and then the documentation backup is with it. If you wanted to have an overview, I would request you listen to Mr. Lecter, as he is one of the representatives for Hebron.
Okay, Mel?
Sure. I'm looking, I think, in your packet, there should be two, two sheets. One is a, a budget sheet. It's not the one Donna has on the screen right now. If we could start on that, that one, and just go, yeah, there you go. You, you, you will notice that the, the year-to-year increase is, is larger than it's been in the past, about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Where I would like to direct you is to the top of the right-hand column, to the five-one-one-zero salary and wages, and you can see that there's a hundred and five thousand dollars increase to that, that account. AHM has never had as many requests for, for counseling as ever since COVID kicked in. Last year, they created two new counseling positions, along with the expenses to set up two more offices so that the counseling could happen, you know, concurrently. They still had a waiting list of approximately thirty people. They've tried working with other outside agencies to see if they could pick up these people, and they keep checking back with, with the, the people that are on the waiting list. The outside agencies are also packed because of, you know, results of, of the COVID issues with people being isolated for so long, especially most of their referrals, or actually all of their referrals, Tressa had said, that they're currently serving have come from school, meaning Hebron, Andover, Marlboro, Columbia, school referrals, because some of the, some of the students are just having, having tough time dealing with, with the fallout from, from COVID and, and from just normal life. So they are now hiring a third counselor. She did a lot of study to find out, is this peaking? Do we expect it's going to decrease? And all her sources said, no, it was probably at its peak, but it was going to stay at that peak for a while to go. So the majority, if you look down through here, the majority of the increases have to do with additional resources that were not in the budget last year. The other line that goes up significantly is at the bottom of that column. And this was, I didn't even catch this when we went through it, but one of the Board of Finance members did, did notice this, is sixty-nine-ten, the liability insurance. That's because of two different items. One, obviously, the additional liability insurance, because they now, rather than having their original cast of, of counselors, they have three additional counselors that were not budgeted last year. So that is in the liability line. You know, and of the hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase, when you go and pick it out piece by piece by piece, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars related to the increase to the counseling services. That's the bad news. The good news, and I don't know if you'd call it good news, but if you look in the left-hand column under the Program Services premium, the forty-seven-hundred group, forty-seven-ten, went from a hundred and seventy thousand to four-oh-seven. So you can see that their, their revenue has gone up two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. So the increase to their budget of seventeen percent, really, when you, when you net it out, the increase that's passed on is, is a little bit over three percent. If we can go back to the other page, you, you may notice that, if you remember from last, well, if you look on the, the combined averages section, you can see that last, that this year, we are going up slightly also as compared to other towns. And, and again, the reason is it's a combination of, of not only the number of people in town, but the number of, the number of students at RAM. They, what, yeah. AHM has a different formula that they use, and it, it's really kind of simple. They use the enrollment, the same enrollment numbers that, that the RAM calculation is based on, and they come up with a percentage. So I'm sorry, they use pre-K to twelve, again, state numbers that, of enrollment in each time, in each town. And you can see that Hebron is at forty-nine-point-six-two there. They also use the CIRC town profile, now CIRC, they just keep the total population of the, the town, and they then average those. So if you take the forty-nine-point-six-two, average it with the forty-nine-point-eight-five, we come up with forty-nine-point-seven-three. They did change this formula to the, to what you see there about two years ago, and the idea was because the, even though the student enrollment might change fairly dramatically, the total town populations would not, and that would kind of soften, I mean, a, a situation or an example of where Dan was going earlier with the RAMP formula change and this significant increase. This formula was created to try to soften that type of a blow. So that's really the crux, yeah, we're paying, the towns are paying thirty-one percent of the AHM budget. It continues to go down because they continue to get more funding. I keep telling them, the next year you go up, you're going to get criticized, because their commitment was only to, to fund fifty percent. So we're getting essentially, we're getting for two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars, we're getting services worth eight mil, over one-point-eight million dollars. So it's, it's really a pretty good, pretty good deal. We, if we were to go and hire counselors on the outside, we'd be paying twice as much. And counseling is, is a service that's needed in the schools in any district, and it's never been as, as high as it is today. So that's pretty much the budget. AHM, they continue to, to support our community. They've been a valued partner in our community for thirty-eight years, and I can tell you that the Board of Finance approved this budget unanimously about a week and a half ago. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and if not, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I'll read the motion and then open it up to the board. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen endorse and support the town of Hebron's share of the AHM fiscal year 2023-2024 budget in the amount of, pick this up, two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and approve its inclusion into the, excuse me, town budget. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. And just to echo what Mel was saying, the, the, the benefits that we get are just so great with AHM, and they've been a very, very solid rock in our community for, for years, and hopefully for years to come. Okay. Moving on, our next thing would be the draft agenda for the, yeah, March sixteenth. Flying already. Regular scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. Anything, any changes, additions? I don't know if they have tonight that, that came up, so again, any, any, whatever, just, just get it called in. Our next thing would be our consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually, and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who otherwise wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion. My, I know, and again, Gail was sadly, again, under the weather tonight. She called me literally just before the meeting. I know she had some issues with the January nineteenth meeting, and I would like to again table that, lest everybody, okay, it sounds like people are okay with that, just because I don't know what, what the issues that she had were. So we'll table the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. make a motion that we approve the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting and the tax refund as listed. Does anybody have anything on the February sixteenth? I, I very quickly perused it, and sadly, I didn't spend as much time as I usually try to. But did anybody take a look at it at all? No. Did, did anybody look at the February sixteenth minutes?
I, I, I did, but I did what you did. I mean, I went through it quickly, but I, I really didn't slow it down like Gail typically does. I, I sort of, I looked, I did read it, but I may have missed something, it's possible.
Okay. Well, do we want to approve it? Make a motion to approve the minutes as posted for that and the tax refund, and we'll see where it flies. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And I'll, I'll vote aye. If there's anything major, I'm sorry. Okay. Next would be our liaison reports. Tiffany?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. I know that we'll hear from the Open Space Committee next week as we kick off budget discussions, so that's all I have.
Okay. Peter?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I do have, I do have three, actually, with the addition of the Public Works Facility Survey Committee that Andy mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll add that to my update going forward. And just before that, Parks and Rec, you know, good meeting there. I think, you know, the thing that jumped out at me was I know they're going to bring forward at, at the next meeting, Ken will be talking about some of their ARPA funds and a couple, one bigger item, which it'll, lights, which you've seen, but they're going to bring forward some more information on that. So I'm very interested in that, and actually very supportive of that, so I'll look forward to Ken joining us at our next meeting. Ken is the chair. And the Board of Finance, you know, a lot of discussion really was centered around, on an instant time, I'll just focus on one item, a lot of significant discussion around the Board of Ed budget, and obviously trying to start to get ahead of some of the analysis associated with that. So we would just spend a great deal of time there, so, and, and I, and we've already covered the fact that we'll be digging in, in, in a lot of detail in the coming weeks, but a good chunk of their meeting was sort of some initial reaction and commentary around the Board of Ed's proposed budget. And I'll just move then to the Public Works Facility Survey Committee. I'll provide a, a little, a little more detail than maybe I might normally because of the importance of what we're doing here, and obviously the sensitivity to it. And then also would appreciate the board's indulgence if, because Mel's here with us and Terry, who's on the committee, if, I, I do want to each update, at least give them an opportunity, if I've missed something or they want to add something briefly, I, I welcome their comments as well. I think we need to have a full, our full attention on this for, for the weeks as we move forward, and, and I don't want to miss anything, and I want, I would appreciate that courtesy unless someone objects.
Oh, sounds great.
All right, so I'll provide a brief update. We did meet as a group, and I, I was very happy with, with Todd, and obviously the recommendation moving forward, I think he's going to do a great job there with, you know, with sort of shepherding this process through and providing expertise and structure, was very happy to see that we have what looks to be a very collaborative committee with some diversity of thought, opinions. It, it isn't like everyone's saying we're going to do one thing. They really, there was some really good dialogue, and we spent a majority of the meeting sort of going, allowing everyone to sort of put forth some initial commentary and thoughts about the objective and some of their thinking along, along the lines of what we're trying to accomplish. So I thought that was very good and healthy, and looking forward to, to working with these folks to, to bring this project forward. Just a couple of things I thought folks should be interested in, from a timing perspective, we hope to get a framework of an initial agenda, I'm sorry, initial survey questions, excuse me, in the next, in the next couple of weeks, with the idea that we'll be preparing the survey and obviously keeping the board, you know, in, involved and up to speed on all this, but in terms of a cadence of this, to put a survey out in April, some time period, probably mid-April. Typically, the survey is intended to sit out in the public domain for about thirty days, and then it'll be in a variety, and we'll work through how we can best communicate that and make that available through written form, obviously through all the different mediums, and so we'll be updating the board and getting opinions on that, but making sure that we make it as available as possible. What we think about those around on the board, and we did a previous survey, we had around four hundred respondents. So sort of the, the objective in terms of getting some statistical significance is somewhere between three and seven percent of the voting public, so we'll be looking for a broad engagement. We're going to need four, we need hundreds of respondents, probably four hundred as at a minimum, very rough numbers, and obviously Todd will provide, you know, more specifics on that going forward. So one of our charges is going to be, how do we make sure that we get the broadest engagement possible? And, and again, it's, we're making very clear here that the objective is to bring forth facts and information to inform the public in advance, to then solicit their feedback, to bring that feedback back to inform us. So sort of a, a two-way communication, and, and really excited about getting a broad perspective on this. We've, we've had, obviously, clearly, a perspective on this, but I'm very excited about hearing from the entire community, or at least representatives of the entire community, to try to inform us going forward as to how we can best approach this with the idea that we're going to structure this in a way that we need to keep this moving. There's, there are questions, and I'll state it again, and everyone stated it, you know, for anyone that's listening, it's not, if we have to do something, we have to do something. So the idea is getting some direction as to how best we can do that, whether it's making sure that we present a, a concept associated with cost, so people can assess the impact. We hear a lot about taxes, so how do we bring that information forward? And we'll be providing a frequent, frequently asked question, a document that'll provide a lot of information, but I'm also being, will also be challenged because there are clearly parameters in which a survey becomes too lengthy. So there's generally, and I know Tiffany knows probably better than I, but you have, it's about ten minutes or so, and you're going to lose generally a participant's focus. So we have to be very focused on what we do to make sure we get our points across, so we can solicit that information across the spectrum of topics. So that's where that guidance will be very helpful. We can't over-inform because we won't really get that full engagement. And so a lot of really good, a lot of really good work initially. So again, updates every couple of weeks. We expect to hear back in a couple of weeks with initial framework, and we'll bring that forward to the board and to continue to provide input. So if, it just, if, if I may, Mel or Terry, if you'd like to add anything, any comments at all to make sure the board hears as broad a perspective as possible relative to the update?
Now, Peter, I think you've covered it pretty well. Thank you.
Okay.
I agree. Thanks.
If I may ask the board, is this something, do we want to put this on as an old business agenda item just as a update? Or keep it here in the liaison report?
I, I think it makes more sense to move this up further in the, especially because I think, to Peter's point, I think it's helpful to go into depth on this as opposed to our typical liaison report. So I, I think it would be helpful to move it up.
I Mark?
I agree with that also, Tiffany and Pete.
Okay. I agree. I wanted to get everybody else's opinion before I, I jumped in with mine. So.
I appreciate it, especially if, depending on, you know, others from the committee who might want to participate too in terms of, again, I'm it's, it's a little different than what a normal update would be, but I think we really have to walk slowly through this in terms of making sure if there are questions from the board. I don't want to go too quickly. I'm sensitive to time, but I think this is something that is obviously very important. So I appreciate that. Dan, I think that's a good suggestion, and I, I think it makes sense to put it there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
Nope. Oh, no, not Tiffany.
Mark? Did we lose Mark? Andy?
I'm good, Dan.
Okay. Andy, did you have anything? Either Chatham Health or?
No, other than we, like I said, we passed the budget for Chatham Health. We lost our head sanitarian, chief sanitarian. So we're out looking for a new person to fill those shoes. That's going to be hard to do. So there might be a little bit of a lag in some inspection times and things like that. But we've got a plan to have people step up while we're trying to replace that. But other than that, everything's mostly budget.
Okay, perfect. I had nothing. So that makes that pretty quick. So with that, I believe we are back to public comment. And I don't see anything on public comment. So with that, oh, Andy, put you on the spot again. We have something coming up in a couple of weeks. Is there any update on that?
I'm not sure what you're talking, what are you talking about?
Maple Fest?
I kind of mentioned it in the town manager's report. I was supposed to meet with Diane Nadeau tomorrow. She just postponed on the way to this meeting tonight. So I'll, I'll hook over to the middle of next week. But it looks, looks like we're, we've got a lot of people that want to participate. The tractor parade is filling up. Everything's, the permits are in place. I know that there's been some activity with the Chatham Health District on the food trucks. The Legion is participating this year. We're going to have our new, we're going to have our new recycling bins displayed out there throughout the festival. So we're hoping if the weather cooperates, we should have a good, good showing for the center of our town of Hebron.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. I do not believe we're going to have an executive session because it's just not happening again. I I wish Gail the best. I, I talked to her tonight and I'm nervous. She did not sound well. So anyway, I'm worried because that's what I do best. Anyway, so with that, I, I thank everyone. Please have a safe weekend. Hopefully this weather we have coming in tomorrow night will end up being rain and take all this other stuff away. And if you're a snow lover, I'm sorry. But I want to see the flowers.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine PM, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, all in favor? I think everybody's happy. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
See you, guys. See you.